Good afternoon. Welcome to the post-election meeting of the 32nd Council of the City of Brisbane. I, Colin Jensen, as Chief Executive Officer, Brisbane City Council, am authorised, under section 25.2 of the meeting's local law 2001, to conduct and commence this meeting until the Chair of Council is appointed. May I especially welcome the newly-elected councillors attending their first council meeting: Emily Kim, councillor for Callumvale Ward; Seal Chong Wah, councillor for Paddington Ward; Alex Givney, councillor for Winnen Manly Ward; as well, of course, as all re-elected councillors. I declare this meeting of council open and call upon the Right Honourable, the Lord Mayor, to commence the meeting with the civic prayer and acknowledgement of country. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, CEO. Can I ask councillors to please stand? Almighty God, we, the representatives of the citizens of the City of Brisbane, are here, are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all of its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, lore and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders and those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today and those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and for one another. Thank you. Please sit down.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I also acknowledge the attendance in the chamber today of the former councillor for Holland Park from 1985 through 1997, Gail Coopley. Councillors, I wish to report that in accordance with the Local Government Electoral Act 2011, nominations for the position of Lord Mayor and for the 26 ward councillors was called by the returning officer by notice of election for an election date of 16 March 2024. At the close of nominations at noon on Tuesday 13 February 2024, the number of nominees for each position exceeded the number required. In accordance with the Act and the Local Government Electoral Regulation 2012, the polls were conducted on 16 March 2024. The Electoral Commission of Queensland has published the declaration of the polls on their website, confirming the conclusion of the election on Tuesday 2 April 2024 and the names of each candidate who have been duly elected. A copy of those results is tabled and has also been emailed to each councillor, as well as being available for councillors to view online on the LG Hub. The following candidates have been duly elected: Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinner; Brackenridge Ward Sandy Landers; Callumvale Ward Emily Kim; Central Ward Vicky Howard; Chandler Ward Ryan Murphy; Cooperoo Ward Fiona Cunningham; Deegan Ward Jared Cassidy; Doboy Ward Lisa Atwood; Inogra Ward Andrew Wines; Forest Lake Ward Charles Strunk; Hamilton Ward Julia Dixon; Holland Park Ward Krista Adams; Jamboree Ward Sarah Hutton; McGregor Ward Stephen Huang; Marchant Ward Donita Parry; McDowell Ward Tracy Davis; Maruka Ward Steve Griffith; Morningside Ward Lucy Collier; Northgate Ward Adam Allen; Paddington Ward Seal Chong Wah; Pullan Vale Ward Greg Adaman; Runcon Ward Kim Marks; Tenderson Ward Nicole Johnston; The Gabber Ward Trina Massey; The Gap Ward Steve Toomey; Walter Taylor Ward Penny Wolf; and Winnen Manly Ward Alex Givney. Congratulations to you all. Moving to agenda item two, the declarations of office. Councillors, before taking your declarations of office, I wish to advise that I've already taken a declaration of office from the Lord Mayor. In accordance with the provisions of section 169 of the City of Brisbane Act 2010 and section 241 of the City of Brisbane Regulation 2012, I will individually call on all other councillors to make their declarations of office as per the agenda. When I call on you in ward alphabetical order, please stand, turn on your microphone and give your declaration of office. We shall begin. Councillor Landers.
I, Sandra Jane Mari Landers, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kim.
I, Emily Jean Kim, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Howard.
I, Vicky Jean Howard, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Murphy.
I, Ryan Mackenzie Murphy, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Cunningham.
I, Fiona Joy Cunningham, having been elected as a councillor in the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Cassidy.
I, Jared Ryan Cassidy, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Atwood.
I, Lisa Marie Atwood, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Wines.
I, Andrew Robert Wines, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Strunk.
I, Charles Dean Strunk, having been elected as councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and abilities.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Dixon.
I, Julia Elizabeth Dixon, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Adams.
I, Krista Mary Adams, having been elected as councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hutton.
I, Sarah Mary Hutton, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Huang.
I, Wen Yi Stephen Huang, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Parry.
I, Donita Renee Parry, having been elected as a councillor for the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Davis.
I, Tracey Ellen Davis, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Griffiths.
Thank you, Mr CEO. I, Stephen Griffiths, having been elected as councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Collier.
I, Lucy Norine Heather Collier, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Allen.
I, Adam Lindley Allen, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Chong Wah.
I, Cecilia Ann Chong Wah, have been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Adaman.
I, Gregory Charles Adaman, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Marks.
I, Kim Sherry Marks, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Johnston.
I, Nicole Amanda Johnston, having been elected as a councillor of the Brisbane City Council, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Massey.
I, Trina Marie Massey, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, CEO. I, Stephen Michael Toomey, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Wolf.
I, Penny Joanna Wolf, having been elected as a councillor of the City of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Givney.
I, Alexandra Margaret Irvin Givney, having been elected as a councillor of the Brisbane City Council, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, councillor. And indeed, thank you all councillors. Congratulations to you all. On your desk, there are two original declaration documents. I ask if you could please sign them and leave them on your desk to be collected. I will counter-sign them and ensure that one copy is returned to you. Yes, let me... Signing above the name? I haven't got it in front of me. Thank you, councillors. Councillors, are there any apologies? There are no apologies? Takes us to item four on the agenda. Councillors, the meeting's local law 2001 requires that the Chair and Deputy Chair of Council be appointed at this, the first meeting of every new council. I now call for nominations for the position of Chair of Council. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, CEO. I nominate councillor Sandy Landers for the position of Chair of Council.
Are there any further nominations for the position of Chair of Council? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, CEO. I nominate councillor Charles Strunk for position of Chair of Council.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Are there any further nominations? Councillor Massey.
I nominate councillor Johnston as Chair of Council.
Thank you, councillor. Are there further nominations for the position of Chair of Council? No. I record as three nominations have been received. Section 26.3 of the meeting's local law 2001 requires that councillors vote by voices on the position. I will call for ayes and nos for each nominee until the nominee is appointed. I commence with: All those in favour of councillor Landers' nomination say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The nomination is carried. Congratulations. I declare councillor Landers appointed as the Chair of Council. Congratulations, councillor. Would you please take the chair?
Lord Mayor and councillors, I would like to thank you for appointing me as Chair of Council. And I would now like to call for nominations for the position of Deputy Chair of Council. Lord Mayor. Hello. Yee-hoo, hello.
I nominate councillor Stephen Huang for the position of Deputy Chair of Council.
Are there any further nominations for Deputy Chair? Councillor Cassidy, oh sorry, councillor, yeah councillor Cassidy.
I nominate councillor Steve Griffiths.
Any further nominations? Yes, and I appreciate if you could look around and make sure that you're calling the person on their feet, councillor Landers. I nominate councillor Trina Massey. Thank you. Any further nominations? Okay, as there has been, three nominations that have been received. Section 26, councillor Johnson. Yes, I would like to speak to the nomination. These are procedural, you're not able to speak to these, so we'll continue. As three nominations have been received, section 26.10 of the meeting's local law 2001 requires that councillors vote by voice on the position. I will call for ayes and nos for each nominee until a nominee is appointed. All those in favour of councillor Wong's nomination say aye.
Aye.
And those against say no.
No.
The nomination is carried. I declare councillor Wong appointed as Deputy Chair of Council. Congratulations, councillor. Councillors, the next item of business is the appointment of councillor-to-be Deputy Mayor pursuant to section 177.2 of the City of Brisbane Act 2010 and section 26.8 of the meeting's local law 2001. I now call for nominations for the position of Deputy Mayor. Lord Mayor.
I nominate councillor Krista Adams for the position of Deputy Mayor.
Are there any further nominations for Deputy Mayor? Councillor Collier.
I'd like to nominate councillor Fiona Cunningham for Deputy Mayor.
Are there any further nominations? Councillor Johnston. Thank you. I'd like to nominate councillor Trina Massey as Deputy Mayor. Any further nominations? As there, three nominations have been received. Section 26.10 of the meeting's local law 2001 requires that councillors vote by voice on the position. I will call for ayes and nos for each nominee until a nominee is appointed. All those in favour of councillor Adams' nomination say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
And the nomination is carried. I declare councillor Adams appointed as Deputy Mayor. Congratulations, councillor. Councillor Johnston. You know the rules. Please remain quiet unless you're asked to speak. I now call upon the Right Honourable, the Lord Mayor, to address the chamber. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations and congratulations to all councillors who have been elected or re-elected. Recently, we passed two notable milestones. Firstly, the population of the Brisbane City Council area surpassed 1.3 million just recently. In the past five years, the population of Brisbane has increased by the equivalent of two major regional Queensland cities. It's like taking the entire population of Rockhampton and dropping it into Brisbane. And on top of that, it's like taking the entire population of Bundaberg and dropping it into Brisbane. It's significant growth by any measure, and it's been rapid growth too. The second milestone we recently passed was just yesterday, and Deputy Mayor knows. Yesterday marked exactly five years since I became the 17th Lord Mayor of Brisbane and councillor Adams became the Deputy Mayor. It's been five years with more than its fair share of challenges. I've already mentioned huge population growth, but that's just one of the many curveballs that have been thrown our way. We've dealt with a global pandemic. We were hit with a devastating flood, and we're continuing to be hit with the impacts of a global inflation crisis. On top of this, we're facing a national skill shortage. And that's a shortage of the critical workers needed to build the homes and infrastructure our growing city needs. And all of these things have come with major financial impacts on our city's finances as well. I think it is fair to say, Madam Chair, that this is the most challenging five-year period of any of the last 100 years. There's no rulebook for how to deal with these challenges. Yet, day in, day out, my team and I have rolled up our sleeves and done the things necessary to support residents and businesses in the way that we could. During the pandemic, we introduced a rate freeze for residents, the first in 35 years to cut fees and also help local business manage as well. During the flood, we handed out rates rebates and recovery grants to community and sporting clubs, and we quickly cleared more than 3,000 streets of debris. We built back community infrastructure like bridges, bikeways and ferry terminals even better. And during the global inflation crisis, we worked hard to ensure that council's budget remained balanced so that we could keep the pressure off rates and rents for Brisbane residents. Madam Chair, our record shows that Brisbane residents can trust our united and experienced team to do what's right, to get on with the job and to focus on what really matters. And that's why I'm so humbled that the residents of Brisbane have supported me to continue as their Lord Mayor. And I'm humbled that residents have chosen to give us a strong majority so that we can continue to deliver the projects our city needs as it grows. And the agenda we took to the election was simple, it was practical and it was affordable. We promised we would continue to invest in better roads as our population grows to ensure that residents can get home sooner and safer. We promised to continue improving public transport so that more people have the opportunity to leave the car at home more often. We promised to continue to make Brisbane's lifestyle even better with new parks, libraries, playgrounds, entertainment precincts. And most importantly, we promised all of these things while continuing to keep the budget balanced and relieving pressure on household rates and rents. Our agenda is not radical. It's not extreme. In fact, it's tried and tested. It's an agenda that has helped Brisbane get better each and every year, despite the challenges we've faced. But it's not just what we put forward at the election that was important. It's what we didn't put forward that was just as important. We didn't make billions of dollars of unfunded promises. We didn't promise radical bin changes without any credible plan to fund or deliver them. We didn't dishonestly promise things that there's no chance of actually delivering. Things like council rent freezes, when only the state government can introduce such a policy. Things like free public transport, when it's the state government that sets fares and receives all fare revenue. We didn't simultaneously promise to build more homes while also telling people we'll oppose virtually every single development that happens. We didn't promise to lift the cap on infrastructure charges paid by developers when those charges are capped by the state government, not by council. We didn't promise to advocate for defunding the police during a crime wave. And we certainly didn't encourage people to break and enter and steal during a crime wave. And we didn't seek to divide people in our community and drive wedges between people. We didn't seek to demonise mum-and-dad investors who own rental properties. We didn't seek to demonise the building industry who builds 96% of all new homes in this nation. We didn't seek to demonise and shut down entire industries, like the racing industry, who employs 15,000 Queenslanders. We didn't target and demonise local businesses who supply parts to our defence industry. We didn't seek to divide people by cynically using the tragic war and loss of life in the Middle East to win votes in a council election. And we certainly didn't fan the flames of hatred and antisemitism in a way that was sickening and genuinely disturbing. But, Madam Chair, there was one political party in this election who was happy to put forward all of these extreme and divisive policies and agenda, and that political party was the Greens. And, Madam Chair, I have to say, what I found truly shocking is that rather than condemning the Greens' dishonesty and their divisive agenda, Labor councillors and candidates clearly had no problem with it. Not only did they refuse to condemn the extreme and divisive agenda of the Greens, they actively encouraged voters to support the Greens with their preferences. And if there's one key takeaway from this election, it is this: The way that the Greens campaign and how they get their support is no different to the parties of the far and extreme right. They offer simplistic solutions to highly complex problems. These solutions normally backfire and they actually make things worse. They seek to divide our community through fanning the flames of envy, hatred and class warfare. And when I called out the Greens' Lord Merrill candidate for this divisive approach at the leaders' debate, guess what he said? Many of you were there. He said words to the effect of, "We didn't create those divisions, they already existed. We're just highlighting them." And in saying this, he admitted that his agenda was to magnify divisions in our community. That's not leadership, Madam Chair. That's not a future for all of us. That's what dangerous populist politicians and cult leaders do to win votes and get people to support them. In stark contrast, my team and I are 100% focused on real solutions to the complex and challenging problems our city faces. And we're focused on uniting our community rather than dividing it. Madam Chair, there's so much of our plan that we're excited about delivering over the next four years. And residents know that they can count on us to keep Brisbane's positive momentum going. Over the coming months, we'll be working hard on the first budget of the new term. And that budget will clearly reflect the commitments we've made to the people of Brisbane. We're going to keep investing in better roads and public transport. We're going to keep growing Brisbane's lifestyle with investment in parks, libraries, community and sporting facilities, and new lifestyle precincts as well. And we'll keep Brisbane clean and sustainable by continuing our practical environmental initiatives. And we'll do all of these things while keeping the budget balanced and maintaining the chief... And we'll do all of these things while keeping the budget balanced and maintaining the cheapest residential rates in South East Queensland. Madam Chair, before I conclude, I want to say some thank yous. Firstly, thank you to my entire team, to the councillors, the candidates, to the staff, to the volunteers and supporters and especially to all of the family members of our team and its members. And of course, on a personal level, I want to thank my amazing wife Nina, the lady mayoress and the Shriner kids for their love and support. It was an incredible team effort, absolutely incredible and we have a fantastic team. I'm proud of every single member of our team. I particularly want to acknowledge and thank Claire Jenkinson and Angela Owen for their amazing hard work and their commitment, not only to this team but to the people that they represented. They will both be greatly missed, although I suspect that we haven't seen the last of either of them. I also want to warmly welcome the new councillors to the chamber. Councillor Alex Givney, councillor Seal Trung Wah and councillor Emily Kim. The role of a councillor is not an easy one and I hope it's one that you find rewarding as you work to make a difference in our community. I want to thank the CEO and his team, particularly the senior managers, for holding the fort during the caretaker period, but most importantly, I want to thank each and every person in the city of Brisbane. I want to thank them for their support and their ongoing confidence in myself and my team. These roles that we hold are truly an honour and one that we treat incredibly seriously and take as a responsibility. My team and I will always strive to live up to the faith that Brisbane residents have placed in us. Thank you is with gratitude that I say that and not only on behalf of myself but my entire team. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I now call upon the leader of the opposition to address the chamber. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Anger, hate and division was the theme I just heard in the Lord Mayor's speech there today. No vision for the future of Brisbane. There were a few glib catchphrases thrown in there at the end, but no actual practical solutions to the wicked challenges that Brisbane is facing over the next four years. Housing congestion, access to public transport, walkability, climate resilience, waste reduction, helping people make ends meet in any way we possibly can, these should all be priorities for this term of council. That's what Brisbane Labour councillors will be focusing on. It's the modern equivalent of the old adage of roads, rates and rubbish when it comes to a modern council. We know Brisbane has evolved, we know Brisbane is growing and council's response to these challenges must evolve too. A business as usual approach to housing will not help people living in the back of their cars. A phantom metro down Gimpy Road will not help solve congestion in the next four years. Spending $140 million on Victoria Park while suburbs flood from simple summer storms will not make us a climate resilient city. And Lord Mayor dumping 800,000 tonnes, let me say that again, 800,000 tonnes of organic waste into landfill ahead of the Brisbane Olympics will not see a carbon neutral gains. As we embark on another four-year term here, it's incumbent on all of us to keep an eye on the two halves of our roles, representing the interests of our communities and acting in the best interest of the city as a whole. It is a big task and it's a massive honour to have that trust placed upon us as elected representatives. This election was my third and it was a vastly different one from the first two, locally and citywide as well. I want to just quickly thank the people of the Deegan Ward who placed their trust in me for this term going forward. I got back to work on day one out in the community because everything I do in here and in this job is for them, is for the community. And I can say my community felt and expressed the utter disrespect that the LNP showed us by selecting a convicted criminal as the Lord Mayor's representative at this election. After years of ignoring our community compounded by cuts and then the insult of a man who was convicted of fraud and weapons charges, Lord Mayor, being the LNP candidate speaks volumes about your party. I met that LNP candidate just once at the ballot draw and I have to say, his visible teardrop tattoo was all the alarm bells I needed as an individual. It still puzzles me that that was the very best the LNP could come up with in my community and we won't easily forget that disrespect. I want to congratulate my Labour colleagues on their election too and to all councillors who have been elected here as well. To the continuing councillors across all parties and the independent councillor, congratulations on your endorsement that you have received from your communities. To the new councillors, a very special congratulations. Two of you have won wards that were vacated by very long-term councillors only a matter of months before the election in Paddington and in Winhamanley. But in Calenvale, councillor Kim won the award off a 16-year veteran councillor. No mean feat. And I know you are absolutely thrilled about the opportunity and have the energy, enthusiasm and drive to provide the representation and the generational renewal that your community craved. I want to thank Labour's candidate for Lord Mayor, Tracy Price, for putting her hand up this election as well. Tracy runs two small businesses, is back to work doing that, is raising her family with Michael and has an amazing passion for Brisbane. I'm continually astounded by her boundless energy. She continues to say that her favourite part of the whole experience was the people that she met right across our great city. But the fact is, we didn't get across the line. And I offer my congratulations to Adrian Schrinner on being elected as Lord Mayor. However, unlike the Lord Mayor, I don't consider this a coronation for him. I won't be referring to him as a king, as much as he apparently wants that according to the media. We don't challenge results and engage in Trumpian outrage. Very few candidates got more than 50% of the vote in their races anywhere in Brisbane. Few. I know a couple of us did, councillor Landers. We respect the result and the votes of the people and we will get on with the job and I hope the LNP does too after today. We have no time to waste because the challenges Brisbane is facing is being compounded by a challenging situation with council's budget and council's ability to perform basic services. The full effects of this Lord Mayor's $400 million in cuts to projects and services have not been felt yet. As council's workforce comes to terms with fewer resources and less equipment to do even more work, we know they'll be under unprecedented pressure. Labour councillors will have their backs, whether it's our road crews, mozzie spraying teams, bus drivers, maintenance teams, library staff and other front-facing staff in council or our office-based staff in the divisions. We know you are under the pump, we know you are passionate about your work and want to keep delivering. And you should know that there are political leaders in council who genuinely care about the work you do beyond a photo op every now and then. As footpath repairs slip even further, as trees get trimmed less, as playground maintenance falls and roads get worse, we won't simply sit back and accept the status quo. We weren't elected to be cheerleaders for the Lord Mayor, we've been elected to deliver on that promise of a better Brisbane. In the last couple of weeks, I've heard increasing numbers of complaints about KPIs blowing out simple jobs delayed by months now that the election is over. If rates have to continue to rise under this administration, people should at least feel like they're getting a decent return and ultimately, the buck stops with the Lord Mayor. We know one promise the Lord Mayor made ahead of this election lasted 24 hours. He opposed a multi-billion dollar stadium in Victoria Park the day before the election and 24 hours later, he broke that promise. So we hope the rest of this term sees the Lord Mayor delivering and not disappointing. He promised to bust congestion, he promised to reduce crime, he promised to build more housing and he promised to keep rates increases low. Let's see if this Lord Mayor can deliver on those promises he made to the people of Brisbane or whether he'll fold like a deck of cards. The Lord Mayor, like all of us, has a unique opportunity to contribute to Brisbane's future. In so many ways, the last decade here in Brisbane has been littered with missed opportunities and this next four years cannot deliver us four more years of the same because the Brisbane of tomorrow will have to pay for it. I'm excited to lead our team this term in advocating for more affordable housing here in Brisbane, for more sustainable transport and for better investment in our suburbs. We want to see Brisbane become a climate resilient city and one where its council workers are treated with respect and paid fairly. We'll work with the administration where it's in the best interests of the city and we will fight for our communities where we need to. Brisbane will be well-served over the next four years by having councillors who are champions of their communities here in City Hall. I'd just like to also extend some thanks to a few people who've been with our team for some time and are moving on to new challenges and opportunities. To Dan Begoshin, who joined our team a couple of years ago and in that time has made an amazing contribution. It's your first job in politics, maybe it's your last, I don't know. You did very well in understanding the intersection of public policy and electoral politics and I always appreciated your cool, calm and collected approach to the job and your stunning work ethic. Our great loss here is the ski fields of Victoria's gain, so please enjoy your adventure. To Quinn Stori, four years in my ward office, countless local events, hundreds of times staffing me and tens of thousands of photos taken. We've done some amazing things locally, none of which would be possible without the hard work of people like Quinn who's here behind me. Late nights over the years, early starts, 4am starts at the Iron Bumpin Festival, learning new skills, doing new things and completing a law degree along the way. Couldn't have asked for a better staff member to support me over the last four years. Couple of examples why is I remember as I was handing out sandbags and directing traffic at Zulmea on the Sunday of that flood in '22, Quinn was out in the flooded streets of Deegan rescuing people in a tinny. And that speaks volumes about the kind of person that he is. So we will certainly miss you and wish you all the very best on your adventures, Quinn. And to Tom Hinchcliffe, six years with me in just about every role I had to offer, part-time in the ward office, to senior policy adviser, the most calm and dedicated loyal person I know and you took on any challenge I threw at you and I threw a lot over the years. And putting your City Hall work aside, always continued to support the local community as well. You're certainly a big loss to our team here in City Hall, but in losing a highly skilled and qualified, hard-working staff member, I'm gaining a lifelong friend on entirely equal terms. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. I just want to mention that that is the end of the ceremonial part of proceedings, so any guests may want to leave now. We'll just give you a little bit of time so that there's not a lot of disruption going forward. So if you do wish to leave the gallery or the chamber, please do so now. Thank you. Lord Mayor, in accordance with section four of the meeting's local law 2001, may I have a motion for the fixing of the date and time of the first council meeting, please?
Madam Chair, I move that the first ordinary meeting of this council be held on Tuesday the 23rd of April 2024 at 1pm and that the date of future ordinary meetings of council be decided at that meeting.
Seconded. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by councillor Dixon, that the first ordinary meeting of this council be held on Tuesday the 23rd of April 2024 at 1pm and that the date of future ordinary meetings of council will be decided at that meeting. Is there any debate? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, I just would like to speak briefly on the reconvening of council this year. The first thing I'd like to say is what's happened in the last few days has been quite unusual. I have been a councillor for 16 years and this is the first time that we've had a council meeting in the middle of school holidays. Whilst that's not a problem for me, I imagine it is for some other people. It is extremely unusual that that has happened. Secondly, for the last X number of swearing-ins, they've always been on a Wednesday, today it's on a Tuesday and we had extremely limited notice of what was happening. So that is very problematic. We've not been provided with the ongoing dates for council for the year, so we still don't know what the sitting dates are and presumably we won't be told until next Thursday night when those dates are provided.
Councillor Johnston, can I just interrupt you there? None of that is relevant to the motion. It states in the motion that that will be done at the next meeting and it is actually part of the City of Brisbane Act that council must hold a meeting within 14 days after the conclusion of each quadrennial election and the conclusion of a fresh election of its councillors. Everything has been done accordingly and so I actually, if there's nothing else you want to raise about the motion, I'll ask you to sit down.
If you would like to debate me, that would be fine, but I don't have to agree with the motion. I am allowed to debate the motion which I am doing.
Then you need to stick to what the motion is about.
And I am, which is talking about the first meeting of the year and the date in which this meeting is being held.
It is not talking about the meeting of today and it is not talking about the further meetings following the next meeting.
Yes, it is. Item B on the agenda in this motion before us.
Councillor Johnston, just...
The date of the ordinary meetings of the council is to be decided at the next meeting.
Correct.
Yeah. So I can debate that? Or are you saying I cannot debate that?
That's what I'm saying, just stick to what you can debate.
I am debating that. You seem to be debating that too, but that's not your job, Madam Chairman. So are you just disagreeing with me or have I breached a procedural rule here?
I'm keeping you relevant to the motion. Continue councillor Johnston or sit down.
What a good job you're doing already. The first meeting being held on Tuesday the 23rd of April is still essentially two weeks away from now. Something has gone wrong with this swearing-in process. The Lord Mayor's been sworn in secretly in advance of this meeting without any notice to anybody. In fact, we were told that there were no early swearing-ins, that we all had to wait for the swearing-in in an email that came out to all ward officers. So not only have we got unusual dates for swearing-in, we have to wait two weeks for a full council meeting. In that time, there will be an ENC meeting. We don't know what secret decisions the Lord Mayor and the CEO have already cooked up or how long the Lord Mayor and the CEO have been meeting prior to this meeting. And we don't even know when the council meetings for the rest of the year are. Now, that lacks accountability and it lacks transparency. These are the fundamental problems with the LNP in my experience and they are the fundamental problems with the LNP under the administration of councillor Adams, who's talking a head off, but that's not a problem for councillor Landers, and the Lord Mayor. So this LNP administration has blotted its copybook on day one with a lack of accountability and a lack of transparency. Even as late as 6pm last night, we got an email after I queried whether we could bring guests. That's when we were told that we could bring witnesses and family members to come.
Councillor Johnston, as I said, please stick to the motion.
I think it's pretty relevant. So there is a real problem with the way in which these motions have been drafted. This is a problem of leadership. It is a problem, the Lord Mayor has spoke vilely today in my view about the election and some issues that were raised during the election. And yet, today, in this motion before us, he is putting this council on the back foot because of decisions made to hide swearing-ins, to change the way in which they normally happen, to not invite guests and to not provide the dates of council meetings. And I think that that is appalling. And there is another two weeks now where this LNP administration will make secret decisions about what will happen in this city and that will not be accountable to the full council, will not be accountable to the public until two weeks' time. This is the LNP's problem and unfortunately, I don't think they got the message. There was a message in the election and they clearly didn't get it. Some of them are lucky to be here, but the lack of transparency and the lack of accountability that is being established on day one with this motion is a poor reflection on the LNP and I think is not a good start for our city.
Is there any further debate? So I will put the motion, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
For those against, say no.
No.
The motion is carried.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Massey. All ayes to the right and noes to the left. Clarks, please ring the bell. Clarks, please read out the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour, five against and three abstentions.
The motion is carried. Lord Mayor, names, powers and responsibilities of standing committees, please.
Madam Chair, I move that firstly, the membership of the standing committees be set out in attachment C, which has been distributed to all councillors, and be the membership tenure of all standing committees be for the full four years of this term of council unless otherwise decided by resolution of council or by other means in accordance with the City of Brisbane Act and local laws.
Seconded. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by councillor Dixon, that the naming, powers and responsibility of council's standing committees, other than the Establishment and Coordination Committee, be as set out in attachment A, and the first meetings of the standing committees be as set out in attachment B, which have been distributed to all councillors. Is there any debate?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank all continuing councillors for their contribution, whether it be for the last year or whether it be for longer than that, but certainly their contribution on the committees and particularly the members of my civic cabinet as well for their work to this point. It's one of those things that a lot of people outside the realm of local government do not realise just what important roles and responsibilities the civic cabinet chairs have, effectively acting as ministers for portfolios in the same way that you would see ministers in the state government. And we know that the Brisbane City Council represents more people than the state of Tasmania, the ACT and the Northern Territory combined, and they all have ministers for different portfolios with less responsibilities than what our civic cabinet chairs do.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Well, relevance, Madam Chairperson. Ministers in Tasmania are not relevant to the council's standing committees...
I don't agree with your point of order.
... assigning their responsibilities and fixing the date and time of their first meetings.
I don't agree with your point of order. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And so it's quite clear that there are significant responsibilities that come with being the chair of a committee, and as well as a deputy chair of a committee and members of that committee as well. And so I want to thank the members of my team for their service in recent times. I particularly want to call out and thank councillor Kim Marks for her service in the city standards portfolio as chair of that committee. And I also want to thank councillor Steve Toomey in his role as the former chair of council as well. They both did a fantastic job, very passionate about their roles. And I know councillor Marks, when she started in that portfolio, one of the things that she was determined to do was to make sure she inspected every single area of her responsibility. And if that involved not just going out to a depot, but going out in the middle of the night with a work crew, she would do that. And I've never seen anything quite like it in the time that I've been in council, but councillor Marks's determination to understand the portfolio and her responsibilities and what all of the members of her teams do was second to none, and she did a fantastic job. And she's asked me for the opportunity to step back from civic cabinet at this point, and so reluctantly agreed with that, but we suspect we'll see you back again in time. The same goes for councillor Toomey, who recently stepped up as the chair, and I have to say, not only did a great job in chairing these meetings, but a fantastic job in assisting me with the citizenship ceremonies that we run, where every month we welcome five to 600 new citizens, together with all of their guests in the citizenship ceremonies, and Steve really enjoyed that process and got into it vigorously. And he also had, did a great job when it comes to the role of civic education, particularly engaging with young people in our community and making sure that they understood about how they can get involved with council. And I have to say, during the election, Steve, one of the things that I noticed, we were walking past a bus stop when the kids were...
Point of order.
Councillor Johnston.
Yes, Madam Chair, I think we're debating item eight, which is the naming of council standing committees, assigning their responsibilities and fixing the date of their first meetings. It's not about the appointments to the committees, it's not about the chairs, that's actually item nine on the agenda. So again, I ask you whether or not the Lord Mayor is being relevant by calling councillor Toomey Steve and talking about the election when we're talking about naming standing committees and fixing their dates.
Councillor Johnston, I rule that it is relevant. Continue, please, Lord Mayor.
Thank you.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Just to be clear then, if you're going to start with this standard of...
Councillor Johnston, I actually hadn't asked you to speak just then.
I will move dissent.
You will wait, sit down, please. When you say point of order, you wait for me to call your name, and I had not done that. Councillor Johnston, I gave you my ruling. Continue, please, Lord Mayor.
You have to call me. You just told me I couldn't speak unless you call me.
Councillor Johnston, you know you've been in this place long enough, you just say point of order, and you went on to other things, but I had not called you your point of order. So if you want to say a point of order, do so, and then I will call you. Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Councillor Johnston, what is your point of order?
I move dissent in your dodgy ruling.
There is no seconded, so we'll move on, please, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. With the chambers indulgence, I wanted to take the opportunity just for a short time to thank some members of the committees and the chairs. And look, I don't think that's unreasonable to do, but some people would prefer me not to thank you. But just finishing up on that...
Do not call out across the chamber, councillor Johnston.
Just finishing up on the point I was making about councillor Toomey's civic education responsibilities, as we were going past the bus stop and all the kids from school were going home, every single one of them seemed to know Steve Toomey because of his active engagement with young people in the community and his local schools. So thank you. So obviously, what we've got here is some minor changes to the naming of the committees, and the main one being the removal of night time economy from the community and arts portfolio and into the economic development and the Olympics and Paralympics committee, where it has a more natural fit. Councillor Howard will continue to single-handedly prop up the night time economy, I know, and so we'll effectively have two nightmares, both with councillor Howard and with councillor Adams, the deputy mayor, being passionately responsible for the night time economy and doing their bit. But that is the main change that is coming through here, and I'll leave this for debate of the chamber.
Is there any further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I'll speak to the actual motion that's been moved. Firstly, I'd like to say that this is a lost opportunity to do some revisions and establish a more robust committee system at Brisbane City Council. The Lord Mayor sent an email out a couple of weeks, well, a few days ago actually, asking people to nominate what committees they wanted to be on, and I think it was just a faux email, because the next morning out comes the list which bears pretty much no resemblance to probably what everyone asked for, including myself. However, what did also come out then with the committee papers was the committees, which are essentially the same as last time. The deputy mayor now has an actual job rather than just oversiding the Olympics. Perhaps he'll be running around the valley at night now instead of councillor Howard, I don't know. But the interesting part here, and where the lost opportunity is, I think, is that yet again, the administration has appointed four of its own people onto every committee and two opposition councillors on to each committee, including myself, Labour and the Greens. So there is a complete gerrymander of the council committee system that is going to continue under this administration, and it does stem from a problem that happened a bit over a decade ago, when they lost a vote, lost a vote, was that Parks Committee, Steve, I think, might have been Parks Committee, when some of their people didn't turn up and the chair couldn't run the meeting. But the problem with this is the administration does not listen. It does not govern for all the people of Brisbane. It governs for itself and it governs for its own wards, and this is reflected in the way in which they administer the committee system. Most committees, so people who might be watching or listening would understand, and I was on planning, I've been taken off planning, but I was on planning for a while, the presentation will go for 25 or 26 of the 30 minutes, leaving about three or four minutes for petitions and general business, and there's never enough time for general business. So there is a real problem in the fact that these committees are designed deliberately to avoid scrutiny by non-LNP councillors in the committee process. And part of that problem is the way in which the timing is set up for our committees, which is on the attachments before us here today. So each of these committees runs for half an hour from 8.30 till 9, 9.30 till 10. Committees are on at the same time, so if you're an independent like me, you will always miss half the committees because they're on at the same time or concurrently with the committee meetings that you have to attend. There is no opportunity for these committee meetings to do anything in depth because of the time restrictions put on them by the LNP. So what the LNP does is control the numbers, holds the majority, so that they will win every vote in committee, and two, they control the time so that non-LNP councillors do not get the opportunity to interrogate the LNP councillors who are responsible for these committees or departments in council. And this is again showing a lack of accountability and transparency by the LNP administration. It is not the way to engage in good government for the city of Brisbane. It does not enhance our democracy when there is no scrutiny of the decision-making process and no opportunity for interrogation of that process through the committee system. So this is a lost opportunity to set up a better and more robust and accountable committee system in Brisbane, and I note that the Lord Mayor didn't talk about any of this, none of this. Councillor Toomey and the bus in the gap with the kids, that's what he wants to talk about. So I think that gives the people of Brisbane, I think that gives the people of Brisbane a really good idea about how the Lord Mayor is going to run this city. He is running it for himself and his mates, he is not being responsible through the democratic systems that are set up under the City of Brisbane Act, and where there is the opportunity to increase that accountability and transparency, he has failed to make any changes to improve that system here in Brisbane, and that is again a poor way to start this term.
Is there any further debate? I will now put the motion, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The motion is carried.
Division.
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 A division has been called by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Massey. Councillors, yes to my right, nos to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read out the results of the division.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 26 in favour and one abstention.
The motion is carried. Councillors, the next item on the agenda is the membership of the standing committees, including the appointment of civic cabinet chairs and deputy chairs, and the determination of membership tenure of those committees. Lord Mayor.
Madam Chair, I move that the membership of the standing committees be as set out in attachment C, which has been distributed to all councillors, and the membership tenure of all standing committees be for the full four years of this term of council unless otherwise decided by council resolution or by other means in accordance with the City of Brisbane Act and local laws.
Seconded. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon that a, the membership of the standing committees be as set out in attachment C, which has been distributed to all councillors, and the membership tenure of all standing committees be for the full four years of this term of council unless otherwise decided by resolution of council or by other means in accordance with the City of Brisbane Act 2010 and local laws. Is there any debate? Lord Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Look, no doubt this will draw some debate, but since 2008, there's been a practice in place whereby four administration councillors are put on each committee. This is not a new thing since 2008, and what happened in 2008? We gained a majority in the council, and so councillor Johnston can put whatever spin on it she likes, but this is the way it works, and this is the way it has worked since 2008. Nothing new here. What we have done, though, is we've given priority to, in terms of opposition councillors, to the formal opposition, and it's my understanding that the formal opposition is the Labour Party. People may have other views about what the formal opposition is, but, so we have tried to prioritise their requests where possible, and so councillor Cassidy requested city planning, economic development and Olympics, and was given those committee responsibilities. Councillor Collier requested transport and finance and was given those. Councillor Strunk requested infrastructure and community and the arts and was given those committee responsibilities. Councillor Griffiths requested the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee and was given that committee. Councillor Kim requested city standards and transport committees and was given those two committees. Now, not every request has been able to be accommodated, but we've tried wherever possible to accommodate as many requests as possible. Councillor Massey asked for the Environment Committee and was given that committee. Councillor Chongwa asked for city planning, was given that committee, and councillor Johnston asked for infrastructure and was given that committee. Councillor Johnston also asked not to be on the deputy... Councillor Johnston also asked not to be on the deputy mayor's committee under any circumstances, which is quite appalling. But what we see here is a continuation of a process that has been in place since 2008. And so, as I said, I'm sure there'll be debate about it, but the reality is this is how the committee system has worked since 2008 and this is also the way it will work going forward.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Is there any further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly, it's not actually the way it's worked since 2008. When I first started, there were three LMP councillors on committees, not four. So the Lord Mayor is not being truthful in the way in which he's speaking about the process that's underway here. That only changed after there was a problem and they lost a vote in a committee some years ago now. So the first thing that we're hearing from the Lord Mayor, not only regarding this process of setting up the machinery of how council runs, is something that is just false. And again, this reflects poorly on the LMP. It hasn't always run this way. It doesn't always run this way at other councils or at other levels of government. To ensure there is accountability, scrutiny, sorry, scrutiny and transparency, in some other levels of government, the committees are not run by the level that runs the administration or the party of government. So there are other ways to do things and this LMP administration here at City Hall just wants the gerrymander fix to be in and then has ignored the fact that it's not the way that it's always run and it has run differently in the past. Now, I note that the Lord Mayor has now announced that he has given priority to the Labour Party. So it is good to see, of course, that the two big parties are ganging up and trying to control the agenda here at council. And I'm sure that's great for the Labour members because they got what they asked for. But the Lord Mayor, interestingly enough, did not indicate who didn't get what they asked for. And I just will put on the record that I asked to be on city planning, parks and environment and infrastructure. And I was given one of those and I've been put back on to the city standards committee, which I've been on every year for 16 years. You would think that some other councillor would get an opportunity to be on that committee and help run the council everyday operations, but no. I'm doing that again and I'm sure councillor Hutton is going to be thrilled to be chairing that meeting because it is the part of council that is going so appallingly badly. I drove past waist-high grass in Fairfield today. In Oxley, on the common boundary we share, there's been Facebook posts talking about how terrible the grass is. This city is in an appalling state and I'm happy to serve on, I'm happy to serve on that committee even though I didn't ask for it. But I think that the Lord Mayor's idea that people are getting what they asked for is also not a true reflection of what's happened in the last few days. I would just say that the meetings themselves, I hope, will be more accountable. There will be time for us to ask questions and to raise issues because that has been not the case under the LMP administration of the past council session. And it is problematic when the chairs refuse to engage in a fair use of the rules to allow agenda items like general business to occur. And I think that it is a real problem with the way in which this administration runs. So I note that the Lord Mayor thinks that everything's hunky-dory, but it's not.
Thank you, councillor Johnston. Is there any further debate? Is it, or is, Lord Mayor?
Just to sum up, firstly, I'd like to table the committee membership list as of the 3rd of April 2008, which clearly shows four administration councillors on each committee. So I'll table that one. Councillor Johnston talked about blotting the copybook. There's only one person that's blotted the copybook and that is councillor Johnston herself, who has, we clearly see has misled the chamber here. I provide the evidence to show that. I also did want to, I was meaning to do this before, formally welcome councillor Hutton to the civic cabinet and to encourage her in this new role. Really looking forward to seeing your contribution. There's big shoes to fill, but I know that, I know that with your, with your level of support in the ward, which is now, I think, over 70%, two-party preferred vote, fantastic level of support, you know how to do a job well. And whether it's being a local councillor or now moving into civic cabinet, you will take your role in civic cabinet with equal enthusiasm to the one you've approached as a local councillor. And I have every confidence you'll do a fantastic job in that role. A very critical one, given, you know, we take the city standards very seriously. This is something that we all focus on as local councillors and something that affects every part of the city and something that we need to be working as well as possible. We do know that when people see waist-high grass around, it is probably the state government-controlled sections of land that they're talking about. And we know that that was a major issue during the election where people were seeing long grass and it was actually the entrance to state government land holdings, including the motorway entrance at Greenslopes, the motorway entrance at various places, whether it was the Centenary Motorway, Gaza Road, where in fact the grass wasn't waist-high, it was shoulder-high. And so, look, we've had extraordinary growing conditions in recent times and they've continued with the recent rain. And we've continued to fund our grass cutting programme over summer like we always fund it. And that's continued with cutting back-to-back of the grass, cutting of the grass back-to-back throughout summer and including now seven days a week grass cutting as well. We introduced that rather than the normal five days a week. Obviously, there are sections of grass across the community where it is too wet to mow. And I've seen a lot of evidence myself of where our grass cutters, they've tried to do the right thing and cut the grass and their equipment is tearing up ruts in the parkland, damaging parkland, and we can't have that either. And so it's about getting the balance right to make sure that we can provide the service without damaging the park and green space assets that we have. And so we'll continue to do the right thing and continue to take that seriously. And I know councillor Hutton will do that as well. Welcome to civic cabinet councillor Hutton and also to you, Madam Chair. Welcome to your role. I know that you will do a fantastic job and already very inspired. I know that your time as a schoolteacher will assist you in this role and we have a few former schoolteachers in this chamber and we appreciate your commitment to making sure that the meetings run smoothly and there's good debate and that the rules are adhered to. I'll leave my comments at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We'll now put the motion to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The motion is carried. That now concludes the business of the day and I declare this post-election meeting closed.
The post-election council meeting of 9 April 2024 is now reconvened. Councillors, as advised in my letter to you of 11 April 2024, unfortunately, an administrative error occurred in the declaration of office certificates, which were read out by all councillors during the post-election meeting on 9 April 2024. The declaration of office certificates omitted reference to the code of conduct for councillors under the Local Government Act 2009, which is required in accordance with the City of Brisbane Regulation 2012. On behalf of the organisation, I apologise for this administrative omission and the inconvenience that it has caused councillors. As a result of this administrative error, the resolutions from the meeting on 9 April are invalid and we are reconvening the meeting to make these outstanding resolutions. Previous agenda items that were not resolutions, such as the ceremonial speeches, are not required to be given again. The items on today's agenda are matters that need to be considered by the council. While it is arguable that substantive compliance with the prescribed declaration of office could be sufficient, all councillors have been requested to make another declaration of office. This will ensure that any irregularity is overcome and councillors are not put in a position whereby they could be challenged. I've already taken an appropriate declaration of office from the Lord Mayor and last Friday taken the declarations of office for all councillors, excepting councillors Johnston and Massey, who advised of their inavailability. In accordance with the provisions of section 169 of the City of Brisbane Act 2010 and section 241 of the City of Brisbane Regulation 2012, I will now ask the remaining two councillors to take their declarations of office as per the agenda. Councillor Johnston, please stand, turn on your microphone and give your declaration of office. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. Just for the record, it wasn't inavailability. As I've said previously, I believe these things should be done publicly and transparently.
Councillor-elect, would you like to give your declaration of office?
So, for the second time, I, Nicole Amanda Johnston, having been elected as a councillor of the city of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of office in accordance with the local government principles under the City of Brisbane Act 2010 and the code of conduct for councillors under the Local Government Act 2009, to the best of my judgement and ability.
Thank you, councillor Johnston. Councillor Massey, please stand, turn on your microphone and give your declaration of office.
I, Trina Massey, Marie Massey, having been elected as a councillor of the city of Brisbane, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles under the Brisbane City Act 2010 and the code of conduct for councillors under the Local Government Act 2009, to the best of my judgement and ability.
Thank you, councillor Massey. All councillors, would you please sign the two records of declaration and leave them on your desk to be collected by the orderly? I will then sign and have your copy returned to you. There are no apologies. Councillors, the meeting local law 2001 requires that the chair and deputy chair of council be appointed at the first meeting of every new council. I now call for nominations for the position of chair of council. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I nominate councillor Sandy Landers for the position of chair of council.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations for chair of council? Leader of the opposition.
I nominate councillor Strunk for position of chair of council.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Massey?
I nominate councillor Johnston for chair of committee.
Thank you, councillor. Are there further nominations? As three nominations have been received, section 26.3 of the meeting's local law 2001 requires that councillors vote by voices on the position. I will call for ayes and nos for each nominee until a nominee is appointed by the majority of council. All those in favour of councillor Landers' nomination say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The nomination is carried. I declare councillor Landers appointed as the chair of council. Congratulations, councillor. Would you please take the chair?
of this council. I now call for nominations for the position of deputy chair of council. Lord Mayor.
I nominate councillor Stephen Huang for the position of deputy chair of council.
Are there any further nominations for deputy chair?
Yes, yes, yes Chair, I'd like to nominate councillor Steve Griffiths for deputy chair.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations for deputy chair? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, I nominate councillor Trina Massey.
Any further nominations? There being three nominations that I've received, section 26.10 of the meeting's local law 2001 requires that councillors vote by voices on the position. I will call for ayes and nos for each nominee until a nominee is appointed. All those in favour of councillor Wong's nomination say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The nomination is carried. I declare councillor Wong appointed as deputy chair of council. Councillors, the next item of business is the appointment of a councillor to be deputy mayor pursuant to section 1772 of the City of Brisbane Act 2010 and section 26.8 of the meeting's local law 2001. I now call for nominations for the position of deputy mayor. Lord Mayor.
I nominate councillor Krista Adams as the position of deputy mayor.
Any further nominations for deputy mayor? Councillor.
I nominate councillor Fiona Cunningham for position of deputy mayor.
Any further nominations?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councillor Johnston?
I've had a rethink and I think now councillor Marx is free, she'd be an excellent deputy mayor.
Any further nominations? There being three nominations that we've received, section 26.10 of the meeting's local law 2001 requires that councillors vote by voices on the position. I will call for ayes and nos for each nominee until a nominee is appointed. All those in favour of councillor Adams' nomination say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
I declare councillor Adams appointed as deputy mayor. Congratulations, councillor. Lord Mayor, in accordance with section 4 of the meeting's local law 2001, may I have a motion for the fixing of the day and time of the first ordinary council meeting, please?
Madam Chair, I move that the first ordinary meeting of this council be held on Tuesday the 23rd of April 2024 at 1pm and that the date of future ordinary meetings of council be decided at that meeting.
Seconded. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by councillor Dixon, that the first ordinary meeting of this council be held on Tuesday the 23rd of April 2024 at 1pm and be the date of future ordinary meetings of council be decided at that meeting. Is there any debate? I will now put the motion, all those in-
Hang on, hang, I'm sorry.
Councillor Johnston, I didn't see you stand up.
Sorry, just the Lord Mayor's not going to speak to it. Certainly I want to speak, just to be clear.
Councillor Johnston.
Unless, unless, Madam Chair, you can confirm-
Councillor Johnston.
Thank you, unless you can confirm that our, in the minutes of the post-meeting from last week will be included in the minutes for this week.
Everything is included, the meeting is extended, so everything is in the meeting, including the speeches, as the CEO pointed out, so it will all be in the meeting.
The Lord Mayor's speeches, but you, can you just confirm then that that means all our comments on the motions from last week?
Yes, all of that is included.
Okay, I'll let it go then.
Okay, no problem. I'll now put the motion, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
And those against, no.
No.
The motion is carried. As there is no second, the division lapses. Lord- Lord Mayor, names, powers and responsibilities of standing committees and the day and time of their first meeting, please.
Madam Chair, I move that the naming, powers and responsibilities of council's standing committees, other than the Establishment and Coordination Committee, be as set out in Attachment A and that the first meeting of the standing committees be as set out in Attachment B, which have been distributed to all councillors.
Seconded. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by Councillor Dixon, that the naming, powers and responsibilities of council's standing committees, other than the Establishment and Coordination Committee, be as set out in Attachment A and the first meetings of the standing committees be as set out in Attachment B, which have been distributed to all councillors. Is there any debate? I will now put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The motion is carried. As there is no second, the division lapses. Councillors, the next meeting, the next item on the agenda is the appointment of civic cabinet chairs and members of standing committees and the determination of their membership tenure. Lord Mayor.
Madam Chair, I move that the membership of the standing committees be as set out in Attachment C, which has been distributed to all councillors, and that the membership tenure of all standing committees be for the full four years of this term of council, unless otherwise decided by resolution of council or by other means in accordance with the City of Brisbane Act two thousand and ten and Local Laws.
Seconded. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by Councillor Dixon, that the membership of the standing committee be as set out in Attachment C, which has been distributed to all councillors, and the membership tenure of all standing committees be for the full four years of this term of council, unless otherwise decided by resolution of council or by other means in accordance with the City of Brisbane Act two thousand and ten and Local Laws. Is there any debate? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Last week, we all thought, well, I certainly thought and said that we didn't have any time to waste when it came to getting on with the job of governing for all of Brisbane, as all councillors here have a role and a responsibility to do, but it turns out there was a week to waste in there after this monumental stuff-up. What is concerning and hasn't been explained by the Lord Mayor or by anyone, whether it's the outgoing CEO, the incoming acting CEO or City Legal, who I know will be listening today, and some advice would be greatly appreciated, but what decisions were made by the Lord Mayor, by his civic cabinet colleagues who were supposedly sworn in on Tuesday last week to these committee positions, but then turns out up until Friday, at least lunchtime, were not acting as councillors, let alone as civic cabinet chairs? Were those decisions that the Lord Mayor made in that time as a delegate of council illegitimate? Were project decisions made? Were financial decisions made? Were directions given to the CEO or senior executive positions within council by the Lord Mayor? Have those decisions now have to be remade? Are there, are there issues now facing this council, of which we are all part of, because of this stuff-up? And I don't, I don't accept the Lord Mayor's total buck pass when it comes to putting all of the blame on the CEO and his office, because we know that the Lord Mayor took this declaration of office the week before we did, presumably with the incorrect wording. So when he attended this meeting, having read out the incorrect wording, he should have noticed on the agenda, like we did, that it was different. And I have to say thank you to Councillor Strunk, who immediately, on behalf of the opposition, contacted the CEO to alert...
Councillor Cassidy, I'll just stop you there because we're not talking about any of what has occurred. This is actually a motion to appoint the civic chairs and members of standing committees, so it should be to that. Any legal information you seek, you should seek yourself, but right now, this is the motion that we're looking at. We're not talking about what occurred. Thank you.
Yeah, look, I think it bears, it bears discussion, Chair, because I know you were acting last night as the Chair of Council before you were elected. You were at a citizenship ceremony as the Chair of Council here in City Hall. So there are lots of issues around this process. I'm not saying it was your fault, not saying it was entirely the Lord Mayor's fault or the CEO's.
Councillor Cassidy, I've asked you to be relevant, and on that, I know both you and I, in our communities and many other councillors, can emcee a citizenship ceremony. Please keep relevant to the motion.
So, in, in appointing the civic cabinet chairs again today, we want to be sure, we want to be transparent and open here today in this process and be sure that directions weren't given by the Lord Mayor or his civic cabinet to the CEO or the acting CEO or senior executive managers within council that are illegitimate, that call into disrepute the entire council and the entire council process and put at risk those council offices that carried out those directions as well over this last week.
Again, Councillor Cassidy, that's not what we are debating. Please stick to the relevance of the motion. I'll ask you to sit down.
Sure, sure. This is, this is important and it is relevant, because this is about good governance here in Brisbane City Council. We, we are charged at this meeting, there was one job for the CEO to do in conjunction with the Lord Mayor, who had had himself declared already prior to the last meeting we had here, to ensure that good governance was established in Brisbane City Council. That's what this, this motion before us today, in appointing those civic cabinet chairs and the memberships of those standing committees within council is all about. And decisions that the Lord Mayor took to appoint himself earlier, to then exercise his powers as Lord Mayor outside...
Councillor Cassidy, these are questions which I'm sure you've asked of the CEO, or you may have got legal advice and you've had answered. So we are having this meeting to move this motion for these civic cabinet chairs to get on with their, their work. So please, if you've finished, if you're not going to add to the actual motion that we're moving now, can I ask you to resume your seat?
Yeah, I'll finish on this, Chair. I'd like the Lord Mayor to stand up today and to clear this up, to come clean with what actions he took from, from day one of taking that initial declaration of office and signing that paper the week before last and today, to make sure that we are comfortable as councillors, as elected and declared councillors, in voting on this today and making sure that we're not bringing the entire organisation into disrepute.
Is there any further debate? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, I rise to speak on this motion, just very, very briefly. Obviously, this is a very unusual set of circumstances that's happened over the past week, and my comments about how unusual last week's meeting were on the record, so I won't revisit those. But I am extremely concerned that the Lord Mayor and other civic cabinet chairs and their staff and deputies may have been acting without authority.
Councillor Johnston, I'm going to say the same thing that you heard me say to Councillor Cassidy, that is not what we are debating here. Please stick to relevance on the appointments of who...
We are...
Councillor Johnston, I am speaking, so you don't. As I was saying, we are talking about the appointment now of who will be the cabinet chairs and who, who are the members of the standing committees and the determination of their membership tenure. That's it. Please stick to relevance.
And that's exactly what I'm talking about. When did their tenure start? When was it official? Is it official from last week, this week? I'm absolutely talking to this motion before us today.
Councillor Johnston, that's what the motion is for, so that that will begin now and that we are moving that motion, so please stick to relevance.
I, I'm not debating this with you. I would like to speak on this motion before us today, if it's okay. The motion is about the appointment of the civic chairs, members of the standing committees, which includes the deputy chairs, and the tenure of these standing committees. Now, the problem we have is, as a result of the administrative problem that was created by the CEO, we don't know who was acting when, in line with the responsibilities that are appointed under this motion before us today. That is fundamentally the problem.
Councillor Johnston, do you have anything to say about what we are currently moving and that who's, who the civic cabinet chairs will be? If not, can you please resume your seat?
Yes, I am talking about them and I'm talking about the tenure of the standing committees, which is part of the motion as well. So I would like to know from the Lord Mayor as well, whether any of the chairs, the deputy chairs or the chairs' staff, who often act directly in instructing council officers, whether or not any of those decisions were made over the past week. And certainly, I have put in requests to the CEO to clarify the Lord Mayor's actions about this.
Only the CEO can answer those questions for you, Councillor Johnston. You've put in your questions to them. This is not the place to do that. We are now discussing, and if you have no further to say, I'll ask you to please resume your seat.
I most definitely do have more to say, but I'm not debating this with you. I'm making a speech. I'm not asking you a question. I'm not expecting an answer from you. If I have a procedural issue, Madam Chair, I'll happily raise that with you, but I am speaking on the matter, not asking you a question.
I'll just be clear, Councillor Johnston, before you go any further, we are not speaking about what happened previously, we are speaking about this particular motion, so I ask you to please stick to that.
Thank you. And this particular motion is the second motion for the appointment of the civic chairs and members of the standing committees and determining the membership of, tenure of the standing committees. And it's the second motion to do this, not the first one, the second one. And the big issue is around tenure. When did that commence? It did not commence last week.
Councillor Johnston? I am going to warn you, because I have asked you to stop this and to stick to what is the motion, so if you have no further to say about the members of the standing committee and not what has happened previously, I ask you to please resume your seat, so we can get on with the motion.
I most definitely am speaking to the motion before us today, which is clearly, and I'll just read it, the appointment of the civic cabinet chairs and members of the standing committees and determination of the membership tenure of the standing committees. The tenure of the standing committees, and that is the issue about which I am speaking at this time. I believe I am being relevant and I am extremely concerned that those people who are being reappointed today for the second time to civic roles had been acting in those roles for a week without the authority to do so. Now, like the leader of the opposition, I have asked some questions of the CEO about this, and I believe that there should be some public disclosure about...
Point of order, Councillor Murphy.
Madam Chair, Councillor Johnston has now six times ignored your ruling on this, and I just ask that you consider whether that's an active disorder.
Thank you, Councillor Murphy. Please round up Councillor Johnston, or you will ask be seated down.
Thank you. The fact that there is a second motion and a second lot of appointments does bear public scrutiny and accountability to see what has happened.
Councillor Johnston, as you are not remaining relevant to the motion, please resume your seat.
I'm sorry, I am discussing why it's important to have public accountability for decision-making under this motion before us today.
I'm speaking, so stop speaking.
You've talked over me the whole time.
Please resume your seat.
You've talked over me the whole time.
Councillor Johnston, I consider that you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct and in accordance with section twenty-one-four of the Meeting's Local Law two thousand and one, I hereby request you to seek your behaviour. Please resume your seat.
Madam Chairman, I would like to speak to this motion, and I believe you are unreasonably preventing me from speaking to it. It is about the tenure of the chairs and members of these committees, and that is the issue that I am clearly speaking to. Is there some reason you are refusing to allow me to speak to the wording of the motion before us today?
Councillor Johnston, I am not going to debate this with you. As you have failed to comply with the request for your unsuitable meeting conduct, I hereby warn you, in accordance with section twenty-one-six of the Meeting's Local Law two thousand and one, that failing to comply with the request may result in an order being issued.
I move dissent in your ruling.
Seconded. Dissent has been moved in my ruling by Councillor Johnston and seconded by Councillor Massey. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those in, those against say no.
No.
Division.
Thank you. Division has been called by Councillor Johnston and seconded by Councillor Massey. Eyes to my right, nose to my left, and please lock the doors and lock the bars. Sorry, ring the bells. Move straight on. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the notes have it, the voting being eight in favour and nineteen against.
The motion is lost. Is there any further debate? Sorry.
If there's...
Is there any further debate?
Well, if there's no other debate, I'm happy to...
Lord Mayor.
Speak. Obviously, there's been some suggestions put forward or questions raised, and I'm happy to put everyone's mind at rest. We have a very formal decision-making process in this organisation, and this entity delegates powers either to committees, to Establishment and Coordination Committee, otherwise known as Civic Cabinet, or in some cases to the CEO to make decisions. Now, there have been no meetings of Civic Cabinet prior to this day. We had planned to meet prior to this day, obviously, but that was not possible because of what has happened, and so there have been no formal decisions made.
Point of order.
What's your point of order, Councillor Johnston?
Madam Chair, you've been repeatedly clear that I am not allowed to speak about these matters, Councillor Cassidy's not allowed to speak about these matters, and now you're allowing the Lord Mayor to speak about them beyond the ambit of the motion.
I don't uphold your point of order, Councillor Johnson. Lord Mayor.
I move dissent in your ruling, Madam Chair.
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It seems Councillor Cassidy and Councillor Johnston had plenty of time to ask questions in this chamber and simply providing some relief to their minds. So there was no Civic Cabinet meeting held, and any decisions that are formally made through Civic Cabinet will be made after we've had this meeting, obviously. And so in terms of the question about acting in a role, I was there last night with you and you were acknowledged as the councillor for Brackenridge Ward, not as the Chair of Council, and that is totally appropriate, because any councillor can be presiding over a citizenship ceremony, and you did a great job as the councillor for Brackenridge Ward in presiding over that.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, Councillor Johnston.
I refer you to your rulings and your repeated warnings of me for not speaking to the motion. You are allowing the Lord Mayor to discuss your personal behaviour outside of the appointment of these committees. It is not relevant based on your own rulings, and are you going to warn the Lord Mayor for not being relevant to the motion?
I don't uphold your point of order, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Johnston...
I move dissent in your ruling.
Councillor Johnston made comments about... Councillor Johnston made comments about where the chairs were acting as chairs. Well, we just discovered this afternoon that councillor Johnston wasn't officially a councillor until this afternoon, and this morning I was out with her where she was acting as a councillor. And she drove her council car to the meeting and she was acknowledged as the councillor, and so people in glass houses should not throw stones, because I saw what was clearly councillor Johnston doing her job as councillor this morning, when she in fact may not have been councillor. So I just wanted to put everyone's mind at rest that the decision-making process has been protected and upheld, and no formal decisions of civic cabinet were made. I did not give any directions as Lord Mayor during this time either, although many aspects of the job as Lord Mayor continue as normal, meetings occur, engagements occur, citizenship ceremonies occur, but the, to the question about what decisions might be impacted, there were no decisions impacted by this. However, now that we've got this sorted out through today's meeting, we can get on with that decision-making process.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Is there any further debate? As there is no further debate, I now call for the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye!
Those against say no. The motion is carried. That concludes the business of the day, and I declare this reconvened post-election meeting closed.